City Commission Meeting, August 28, 2018. We will call a new face to this meeting to give our invitation, Danny Slavich. Am I pronouncing that correctly? Of Cross United Church. Let's pray together. Father in Heaven, Maker of Heaven and Earth, acknowledge and thank you for establishing the authority of this body for the purpose of promoting the common good of this city. Thank you for each person who is here to serve dedicating their time and their mental equity to making Lighthouse Point a great place to live and a great place to work. I ask that you would give each person, each member of this body clarity and wisdom as they think through the business that's before them this evening. Give each one a steady hand to vote with integrity and a humble heart to serve with faithfulness. Thank you for those who have gathered here as employees and residents of the city. I ask you would give them the same humility, kindness, courage, and wisdom. Please use this evening's proceedings to make this city, Lighthouse Point, an ever-increasing great place to live, a place of justice, peace, and prosperity. In Jesus' name, amen.
Call the meeting order. We'll do the pledge of the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United Nations of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Actually, everybody's in here voted, right?
Yes.
All right.
Voice.
You've got seven minutes.
All right, you've got seven minutes if you have it.
You want to get a third time.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Trose.
Here.
Commission President Joffe.
Here.
Commission Vice President Mocker.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Long.
Here.
Commissioner Van Busker.
Here.
City Attorney Cirillo.
Here.
City Administrator Loviski.
Here.
Finance Director Apollo.
Here.
Fire Chief Bill Martin.
Here.
Library Director Keys.
Here.
Police Chief Licata.
Here.
Public Works Director Schramm.
Here.
Recreation Director Leasing.
Here.
We have three proclamations tonight. All will be given by Mayor Trose without further ado.
I think it's appropriate we have this one today on the day we're having the primary elections. So the first proclamation is that a special election of the City of Lighthouse Point, Florida, at which all qualified electors will vote on a referendum to determine whether there shall be issued general obligation bonds of the city or charter amendments related to term lengths and limits of elected official, planning and zoning board matters, and the date and time of the annual city commission reorganizational meetings is to be held on Tuesday, November 6, 2018, in all regular Broward County polling places in Lighthouse Point, Florida. Polls shall open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 7:00 p.m. Applications for Lighthouse Point Special Election Vote-by-Mail ballots may be obtained through the Broward County Supervisor of Elections Office for those qualified electors who request to vote by mail. Pursuant to the provisions of the laws of the state of Florida and the laws of the City of Lighthouse Point, only those citizens over the age of 18 who are residents of the state of Florida and of the City of Lighthouse Point and who have registered in the registration books for the City of Lighthouse Point as qualified electors shall be entitled to vote. Those residents qualified to vote who have not previously registered should do so at once with the Broward County Supervisor of Elections. You can apply to register vote in the following ways: at any county supervisor of elections office, online at registertovotflorida.gov, at any office that provides public assistance during the regular business hours, by mail or in person. The registration books shall be open until 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, October 9, 2018. Second proclamation is to recognize Victoria Burgess. Um, Burgess, I'm sorry. Whereas Victoria Burgess is a former resident of Lighthouse Point and supporter of the Women's Sports Foundation. And whereas the Women's Sports Foundation was established in 1974 to advance the lives of women and girls through sports and physical activity, whereas to raise awareness of women's equality in sports, Victoria attempted to set a world record by being the first female to paddleboard from Cuba to Key West. And whereas on June 27, 2018, Ms. Burgess completed the journey paddling 115 miles in 27 hours and 48 minutes. Whereas the City of Lighthouse Point wishes to recognize Victoria Burgess for her extraordinary efforts. Now therefore, I, Glenn Trose, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Lighthouse Point, do hereby proclaim August 28, 2018, as Victoria Burgess Day in the City of Lighthouse Point, Florida. And Ms. Burgess.
Well, just in case, just if you don't mind, interesting thing is she had a tracker on her so everybody could track her as she went out. And about, not even four miles into it, she lost her tracker. So I said to her, I said, "Out of your parents, your mom and dad who still live in the city, ask them how they, you know, how she did it." And she says, "Man, that was, uh, they were pretty upset." She said, "But luckily I didn't lose it in the middle of the night across the street." But I just find it amazing. I mean, it was 27 hours through the night, all on the paddleboard. And I mean, I've seen her out there. She puts the water backpack on, and she's going for 12, 13, 14 hours straight just to warm up for this thing. So it's really an amazing thing, and it's a great thing to show specifically the young ladies that pretty much anything, you know, a man can do, as long as you put your mind to it, you could do. So Victoria, thank you specifically on behalf of me having two daughters, and I could say that it was very impressive. My daughters are very in awe of you. So congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. We have one more proclamation, and this one I'm very honored to make as well this evening. Whereas the City of Lighthouse Point in the state of Florida has always supported its military veteran population, whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782, whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with the declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure we never forget. Whereas the City of Lighthouse Point has a large, highly decorated veteran population including numerous Purple Heart recipients, and whereas the City of Lighthouse Point appreciates the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms and believe it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support they have earned. Now therefore, I, Glenn Trose, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of Lighthouse Point, Florida, do hereby proclaim the City of Lighthouse Point as a Purple Heart City.
On behalf of Chapter 133, for the disabled American veterans, I present this Purple Heart flag to the city to be flown on each and all military special holidays, Veterans' Day, Memorial Day, and Purple Heart Day, August 8. Would that feel appropriate? We appreciate this, and thank you for your service.
This is, by the way, this is part of Chuck's continuing effort to keep putting more flags on the flag. This is beautiful, Chuck. Thank you.
I was going to say, you pulled too much. It's your, you might want to tell them about the signs. Yeah, well, I left an email. You got to use that. I left John a copy of an email to explain how to get parking signs that stayed parking for Purple Heart recipients only. They're provided for free under the condition that once it's installed, you take a photo and send it back to the originator of the signs. So we don't have that information. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. And special shout-out to Chuck, who is a major asset for this city. Chuck. All but you. Chuck, everybody can leave the seat here. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular September, I'm sorry, July 10, 2018 meeting. I assume the commissioners had a chance to review?
We have, and if there are no questions or comments, I would offer a motion to approve the minutes.
A motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Finance Director Apollo, treasurer's report, please.
Good evening. General Fund has $1,090,473.90. Cleanup deposits, $30,400. Garbage and trash fund, $817,183.99. Special Purpose Fund, $2,916,059.92. Stormwater Utility Fund, $312,523.64. Debt Service Fund, $14,938.68. Community, $5,887,48.02. General Fund Encumbrances, $189,640.97. Total All Funds, $10,854,969.10.
Questions for our Finance Director. Now it comes to the point in our meeting where we have public comments or requests regarding agenda items. You are here to speak on one of the items on our agenda tonight. Come forward, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak. Mr. Bens.
Thank you all for your time spent and your good directions and suggestions at the prior meeting.
Say that again, Leo. Leo, say that again.
I forgot my hat.
It must be his new glasses.
Northeast 31st Avenue. No, I'm concerned a little bit about Resolution Number 7 as to do with the Ibis Bridge. From my memory and reading, Mike's contract for our last bridge project was very good. But somehow or other, we got wound up in all this litigation over the water damage. So whatever needs to be done to cure that or to avoid that the next time, we really need to make sure that that's done.
Understood.
And thanks you all again.
Thank you.
A lot of good things, most everything. It's a big project, and it's going to be a tough battle.
So I do have to say something, Leo. You did give me a scare this morning when I got your email because I did misread it. Leo's daughters have given him a present.
Yes, I have a little alert.
And so Leo sent me an email this morning about fire rescue showing up at his house. And I misread it thinking he was injured, so I called him right away. And it turns out, he wasn't injured. He had taken a shower, and his little alert button had hit the floor, and he didn't hear it go off. And his daughters, when they got a phone call, immediately called fire rescue. And Leo was very complimentary of them. "I hope they didn't get you out of the shower," but he said he was amazed at how fast they got there.
No, it was all over. I mean, they had a problem. I think they brought stretchers and things by front door. And by the time I got out of the shower, it was all gone. So that was quick service. Thank you.
That's what we strive for here at Lighthouse Point.
And I may well owe you the fee. Don't worry about it.
Thank you, Mr. Bens. Any other public comments regarding agenda items? Seeing not hearing none, we'll close public comment. Reports from city administration. We have a report from our city administrator, John Loviski.
Yes, sir. Mr. President Commissioners, the mayor and I would like to bring your attention that our city clerk, Jennifer O., has earned a designation of Certified Municipal Clerk, and it was awarded by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. A Certified Municipal Clerk designation is awarded to municipal clerks who compete, who complete extensive education requirements and have a record of significant contributions to the local government. You know, Jennifer's been here a number of years, and she's worked in the fire department, the police department, the building department, and now the city clerk's office. I think we all can agree that Jennifer does an excellent job as a city clerk. We're very proud of her commitment to the city and of her professional development. It's appropriate to recognize her team.
She didn't know that was coming, so that's why her face just turned a couple different shades.
I'm going to take president's privilege on this. Jennifer O. is basically the face of our city for a lot of residents. And it is not an easy job. It is a job that involves a lot of juggling, a lot of requests maybe from a city commissioner that emails randomly or makes a call or asks for something. And, I'm talking about myself. Jennifer always amazes me is her ability to get the information quickly, get it accurately, keep us all organized. She anticipates things. She is first-class, top-notch, and one of the reasons why this entire city, including all our department heads and everybody up here, is able to do the job. So I have to say that because I am thoroughly always impressed by Jennifer. No department reports?
I have a couple things.
It's not on here, so you can't do it.
Oh, it's not on there? Okay. I want to give everybody an update on the Marathon Station and the purchases of 2101 Northeast 36th Street property and the adjacent Seastore property. We have cleared all due diligence on the property. We've gotten a clean bill of health on everything. We've cleared the appraisal. And as part of going through the diligence process, we ended up extending the diligence period to September 7 so we could get all the work done. Mr. Whitehead happened to spend most of the summer in Maine, which kind of helped delay some things. But he has been very cooperative in getting us through everything. And presently, we are scheduled to close on or about September 24. Excellent. Okay? And then the second thing I have, Jennifer, you have something to put up on the screen for us?
Uh, rendering.
The TV on?
Well, this summer, John and I have worked with our architect on some renderings of what our project might look like. And this is going to be part of our education process, but I wanted to show everybody the renderings we've come up with. This is a rendering of the fire station. They're using a lighthouse motif. That's why the top is glass to give that lighthouse effect. And that is a view if you were standing east looking towards the northwest. The next one, Jennifer, please. That is another view looking from the west towards the northeast of what it would look like. That's going to be a drive-through station. Very creative rendering that they've come up with so far. Okay. Then we have another rendering of the, this is the community center slash Public Works Emergency Operations Building because we're going to be using that dual purposes in an emergency. We put places in so we'd have sleeping quarters in there and showers for our public works employees when they're working hard over at the, on any emergency we have in the city, whether it be a hurricane or something else. Jennifer, the next one. That's another view looking at it. Okay, next one. This is the public works, safety fleet maintenance, public safety fleet maintenance building that's going to be built. And that's where all of our public safety vehicles as well as public works buildings. And that's going to be going where the existing public works building is formerly known as the Craft Center. And so that's going to be on the corner of Dan Wick Park. And then the next one. This is a view of both buildings, including the part of the revitalization of the building across the street, which houses the public works offices. And then last but not least, since the library project is not a building, it is an interior project, so that is going to be the anticipated floor plan. They are going to do a 3D rendering, it's just not complete yet, of what it will look like, so you'll have a view of what it will look like as if you're standing looking into that area. So all of this will become part of the education process. The PowerPoint slides are predominantly, probably about 75% of the way done.
Where's the recreation building?
I'm sorry?
Where's the recreation?
That's the comedy center. Flip back.
Oh, the one that's the community center?
Yes.
That one.
That one.
Ah.
One story or two? It's one story.
Right, and the public works is in it.
Right. Public works is, right. Is the left-hand side where the snack bar would be? Check. It's towards the left, yes. That's looking at it from the field. Jennifer, would you go back one more? And that's looking at it from the parking lot.
Question, Commissioner Mocker. Yeah, not to get too far ahead of ourselves, but we've had some folks, for instance, Lou with the Red Fox would like to put the rendering of the fire station in his restaurant to gin up some publicity.
He's spoken to me about it, and I told him as soon as we have something put together, so I didn't want to give him something before the commission had said.
Okay. And I would recommend maybe not all of the buildings because it would confuse people. The fire station is right next to his restaurant. Might make it a little more simple. Maybe not, and just.
We'll probably give him a couple different renderings he can put up.
Be like a road show.
Yeah. I want to talk to him because he, at one point Lou had asked about putting it up on the TV screens, and another point he asked for an actual, blown-up print that he could put up. So I've got to talk to him and find out which one he prefers.
Okay.
Just a quick question on that. Do we extend our parking right to the building? Well, again, this is a rendering of what it may look like. The actual architecture plans may change slightly. It looks nice. Yeah. Everything else, I figured out where it was, but it was a little. There will be changes to the parking lot. Okay. Adding? Hopefully adding some space, yes.
Mr. Van Busker.
I just, I mean, I don't know if you want to ask this later, but I had a discussion before. We knew it's, this evening was, or prior to this meeting was supposed to be an educational seminar for our CEUs and also so we could talk intelligent but without going against any of the sunshine laws.
If you hold one second. The city attorney is probably going to have a question on that during his report.
Okay, perfect. All right. It's next on the, I didn't see it up there, but I perfectly would like to hear about it, though.
Okay. Anything else? It's exciting stuff.
It is.
So hopefully in the next week or so, we'll have a full PowerPoint available for all of you to take a look at. But there's a lot more slides than this, but I did, given the time constraints, I just selected a few out of it. John and I went through it this morning and went over this.
Okay. Reports, next item, reports from the city attorney.
And yes, Commissioner Van Busker said we were going, originally had scheduled before tonight to have an ethics presentation where you had requested a focus beyond educating and or advising on advocacy versus education in the context of the upcoming election. And so the question put to the commission tonight is, we were not able to do it tonight because of the scheduling necessity of the workshop. So would you like to schedule it instead of dates certain to reschedule that workshop? Your next meeting is on September 12, I believe it is.
Yes.
If you wanted to do it before that meeting, we could.
Are you thinking about an hour?
Yeah, we can make it an hour, give you at least an hour of ethics, maybe come in at 5:30 or five, maybe 5:15 to 6:15, 5:30 to 6:30, whatever. I don't think you're going to need much more than an hour on that topic. A one and a half, a two-hour.
What time does the meeting start that night?
6:30. City budget workshop.
That's what I wanted to make sure of. For some reason, I had it at 5:30.
I'm fine with doing it. Do we want to do two hours of continuing at that night and not get all of our life out of the way for anyone that's missing life?
I have all mine already. I don't have all.
I don't have all mine. I think two hours of life.
I have mine, but I prefer to hear exactly. Yeah, for an hour. For an hour, I would like to hear the information that's given. Why don't we do an hour of, why don't we do, plan on two hours?
Okay.
And then we could do the education, one on education and one on dealer choice.
Mike, can we do one at 4:30 for an hour?
And then? We can do a general ethics at 4:30, and then the focus on education versus advocacy at 5:30.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mike? Good for you? You okay with that, Mike?
Yep.
Just put it in the calendar.
4:30.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, our next planning and zoning board meeting is September 4. That is, there is going to be a meeting, right? That's, there's still going to be a meeting like that?
Yes.
Say that again. September 4. That's just not going to be one on, that was going to be the Yocleve originally, but they moved it. I just want to make sure that meeting is still opening. Code Enforcement, October 16.
Mr. President? We do have an item on the September 4 agenda for the PNC, so we'll have that meeting.
Okay. September 4, next planning and zoning meeting. Code Enforcement, October 16. Community Appearance, September 20. Special Magistrate, September 5. Marine Advisory, November 1. There is no unfinished business. The first item of new business is health insurance coverage for city employees effective October 1, 2018. Finance Director Apollo.
Thank you. The city provides health insurance to all full-time employees. All employees have to enroll in coverage or show proof of why they're waiving coverage because they have insurance elsewhere. So each year, we, our agent of record for the city, Garen Group, they do a competitive bid process in the summertime to obtain renewal quotes from our current carrier as well as competing quotes from other carriers in the market. Sometimes we get good quotes, sometimes we don't. And this year, we received proposals from, in addition to our current carrier, we received proposals from AVMED, Cigna, and Aetna. On the agenda item, you'll notice that AVMED came back with a 13.9% decrease compared to what we actually pay right now. And Cigna came back with a 4.3% decrease compared to our current costs. FMIT ultimately came back with a 1% decrease compared to current costs. The difference between the plans, you know, it's like everything, the devil's in the details. The AVMED plan, the network is extremely limited compared to United Healthcare, which is what we have now. They are very regional. Most of Florida coverage, some areas not covered, a lot of out-of-network areas, and the out-of-network coverage is not very good at all as far as the, what the plan pays for. So although it is a savings to the city and potentially to the employees, that would not be the best option for the city. It would be a severe reduction of benefits from what employees currently enjoy. Additionally, it's a gatekeeper network. You can't just get anything, any kind of test or procedure done at any time, which is sort of what we can do now with our current plan. There really are no obstacles or hurdles to getting healthcare. With the AVMED plan, there are a lot of obstacles, and they really control and regulate the administration of the healthcare, and it makes it very difficult for people. So we, you know, in discussions with our agents at the Garen Group, they agree that that was probably not the best fit for the city. The plans for Cigna again offer additional reduction in cost. However, when we look at the subsidy, how it works for what people pay for the insurance, it actually would cost some employees more money that have health, that have family coverage. So we, it's not an equitable renewal. We really couldn't do that for our employees where some would get a savings and a large number of people that have family coverage would actually pay more money. Additionally, their plans are comparable. Their network is pretty comparable, but again, we just don't, just wouldn't really work for us with our current structure. The other thing I'll say about when other companies come in with a nice renewal, a nice quote for us where it's very attractive and they say, "Yeah, we're going to lower you, you know, 13% or 4%." The problem is they don't know the city's claims experience. Our current carrier does. They know the claims we have, they know what the plan is, what it's costing them to insure us. If other people quote us at very low premium, chances are that they're not really taking into account the health issues that some of our covered people have. And after a year of us being on the plan, they could come back with a very large substantial increase that would actually wipe out the savings that we got and then add more cost to it. So there's always a risk in switching carriers. It would really have to be the right fit at the right time, and it would have to work out very well for everybody for us to switch. So at this time, we're recommending that we continue with Florida Municipal Insurance Trust with the United Healthcare Plans. It's a 1% savings and premium compared to our current cost. And I recommend that by motion, City Commission authorize a renewal of this coverage for fiscal year 2018-19. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Long. Kind of surprised that two, I guess, bigger ones in the state of Florida is Humana and with Florida Blue, but they're not participating at all in this?
We, well, Kristen from Garen Group is here. Did we receive any sort of, what kind of things?
Humana's commercial business is not robust anymore. They're moving out of the commercial market.
Okay. And typically, don't the other people bidding have access to, you know, the previous, you know, medical complications or anything else that's happening there?
No.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Seeing none, hearing none, we need a motion, we can do this by motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the, as recommended by city administration, to accept our current insurer of FMIT as the insurance group, effective coverage start October 1st, 2018.
Second down motion.
If a motion we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Next item of new business, waive the bid process to purchase three 2019 Ford Interceptor SUV vehicles using Florida Sheriff's Association bid, and one 2019 Chevy Impala.
Good evening, commissioners. As we do every year, I'm asking that you waive the bid process for the purchase of three 2019 Ford Interceptor SUV vehicles utilizing the Florida Sheriff's Association contract, and one 2019 Chevy Impala utilizing the National Joint Powers Alliance bid award. The proposed 2018-19 budget, our general fund budget and our forfeiture budget, that concludes the funds that you approved earlier this year in June for the purchase of these four vehicles, and they will replace high-mileage vehicles that have exceeded their useful life in the police department. Based on state contract pricing, it's been customary to waive the bid process for the purchase of the vehicles and piggyback off the Florida Sheriff's Association contract, which has historically been the lower bidder. The FSC contract provides the lowest price for the 2019 utility vehicles, and in the case of the Chevy Impala, we're utilizing the National, National Joint Powers Alliance contract, which is providing the better pricing on the Chevy Impala. Following pricing is provided by Allen J Automotive Network, who is the vendor for the state of Florida and our region, and the prices are listed there, the three 2019 Interceptor utility vehicles are $93,492.75, and the Chevy Impala is $26,921.25. I'll give you the information on the surplus vehicles momentarily. It's important to note that Ford, normally we put in for these vehicles after October 1st, but Ford is now accepting orders for the 2019 Ford Interceptor utility vehicles at 2018 pricing, if we can get the orders submitted by September 1st. It's kind of a timing issue this year, Ford is doing away with manufacturer of their cars, focusing their attention on their SUVs, and there's been such a demand for the vehicles that they're looking to get these orders in early. If we don't get them in by this date, and it's not sometime after October 1st, it could be eight months to a year before we get the vehicles. Typically, it takes four or five months. The three 2019 Interceptor utility vehicles, as stated, are coming from the general fund, purchase of the Chevy Impala will come from forfeiture funds. Recommending that the city commission take the following action by motion, waive the bid process and authorize the purchase of three 2019 Ford Interceptor utility vehicles from Allen J Automotive for $93,492.75, utilizing the Florida Sheriff's Association contract, utilizing future lease purchase financing, and waive the bid and process and authorize the purchase of one 2019 Chevy Impala from Allen J Automotive Network at a cost of $26,921.25, utilizing the National Joint Powers Alliance contract, utilizing federal forfeiture funds. In addition, we're also asking that you declare the following vehicles a surplus property, I'm not going to spell it all out, but there's three 2010 Ford Crown Victoria vehicles, the number is noted, and one 2008 Ford Taurus, incidentally. We are now going to be rid of all of the Ford Crown Victoria vehicles from that company.
Are the Crown Vics worth anything?
I mean, we've been getting some decent money for them. You know, these are now over 100,000 mile vehicles, and they're almost 10 years old, so, you know, we may get 1,200 to 1,500 bucks on them.
Really? Because I just saw Miami Police had one painted to match Wynwood, and they were using it as a car in the Wynwood area for, you know, community relations and everything. I thought Becky might want one to, you know, paint up for, using the park for community relations. Give up or explore or something.
Commissioner, Mr. City Attorney, separate items, should we do these by separate motion? Do it all together?
You can do them all together, if, you know, unless there's a concern with either one of the bid processes, because they both have to be waiver, excuse me, they have to be unanimous, so unless there's any concern by anybody, it can be a single motion.
Including the surplus?
Yes.
Commissioners, any questions for the chief?
There are no questions, and Mike is sneezing.
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, I have one quick question. You said that the three interceptors are coming out of the general fund, are those budgeted items?
Yep.
That's all, sorry.
All right, having no further questions, I would offer a motion to waive the bid process and purchase three 2019 Ford Interceptor SUV vehicles, and the one 2019 Chevy Impala, as well as declaring three vehicles as described by the chief as surplus.
The motion is a second.
Four vehicles.
I'm sorry, four vehicles, as described by the chief as surplus.
The motion, second. If a motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes 5-0. Mr. Chief? On your agenda, new business item number three, consider declaring Public Works Truck, old number 412, apparently, a surplus property. Could you get one more year out of it?
Did I put "old" in there?
No, it's just, it's 1992, so I.
You could get another year if it was running.
Fair enough.
So, the Public Works Department has a 1992 GMC 3500 flatbed truck, it's at the end of its lifespan, it has served as a chipper truck, a general hauling and maintenance vehicle, and presently has a water tanker truck. So, I have a list here of the things wrong with it, when it, when it had brake issues, which is what took it off the road, because it was unsafe, I had the city mechanic go through it, and without spending $1,000 of his time, give me a quick, short litany of other issues that it had, those are listed here. A rough estimate for repairs to make it roadworthy is $13,000 to $17,000. Kelly Blue Book was 1,500 to 2,700 for fair condition, but they don't offer poor and no running, so it's probably more than that.
And no brakes. They run, still stop.
So, I have an estimated $1,200 for auction, that could be optimistic, but there's a lot of steel, and that's recyclable as well. On a positive note, we purchased a water trailer this year, and it's much more versatile, we can tow almost all of our pickup trucks. So at this time, I'd recommend the city commission declare Public Works Truck 412, 1992 GMC 3500 flatbed, a surplus property, to sell, trade, or auction with the approval of the city administration.
Can we make that motion? We have a motion.
Second.
If a motion we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
On to ordinancees, first reading of an ordinance amending the Florida Municipal Trust Fund defined benefit plan and trust for police officers and firefighters related to collective bargaining agreement with Metro Broward Firefighters Local 3080, City Attorney, Senator Loeb.
This is an ordinance to amend the trust fund, would allow the changes to your current plan. I don't know if you have any questions, that would be for Mr. Limbisky to answer.
Question?
I just had a question, how long, I mean, looking through all this, I know that there's a process behind it, how long will the process is going to take, roughly, that you're hearing from the state and for us to start with this, we're looking into?
We're, this is the first reading of the ordinance, and we're going to bring it back on September the 12th for the second reading. There's also, there's also going to be a resolution that you have to pass, that is kind of, will send to FRS to tell FRS, yes, we are joining FRS. So this ordinance modifies the plan, we have a collective bargaining agreement, now we have to have a reso to tell FRS we are joining, they got to send ballots out to the, to the members, to see what they want to do, whether they want to join FRS or not. It's not a secret ballot, should be a quick process. If everything goes perfect, if everything goes perfect, we could be finished by one October. With the firefighters enrolled and start paying in.
Okay.
And that's, and that's a very fast train, that nothing holds us up, but now the police officers, you know, it's going to be different, because they're late.
And Kyle just adds to that, Frank has already uploaded all of the employee information to FRS. So they have that already, so it's just a matter of, you know, doing the steps.
Right.
Commissioner Mock, we need a motion to read, though.
Yeah, I'll do a motion to read first.
Second, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Lighthouse Point, Florida, providing for modifications for Florida Municipal Trust Fund defined benefit plan and trust for the police officers and firefighters in the city of Lighthouse Point adoption agreement, providing for conflict serviceability and an effective date.
Commissioner Mock.
Yeah, as I understand, during the discussions, there was some talk about FRS doesn't just rubber stamp your approval, because you just can't go in it, you have to meet certain criteria. Is this the process that we use to meet that criteria?
We're, yes, that's correct, this ordinance has been routed through the Florida League of Cities and also through FRS. So we're, we're working with Jim Crowson's office, David Miller, and a lawyer in Jim Crowson's office, who is, he is a pension expert, and he's walking us through the entire process.
Okay, good, so there's no sneaky thing out there that could trip us up?
If there is, we don't know about it. And FRS has been very, I mean, they've been very responsible through this process.
Good, okay, that answers my question.
And just a quick question, when we have a second reading, will we have the resolution right after that?
Yes.
Okay, so that'll be same day.
Perfect, thanks.
With all of that being said, I'd offer a motion to approve Resolution 2018-0967, providing for modifications for the Florida Municipal Trust Fund defined benefit plan and trust for police officers and firefighters of the city, adopted agreement providing for conflict, providing for serviceability, and providing effective date.
A motion, a second by Commissioner Johnson, all in favor.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes 5-0. On to resolutions, the next item is a resolution approving a second amended, an amended and restated solid waste and recycling collection contract with Waste Management Inc. of Florida. Agenda items five and six both involve waste management, I am going to, as I've done in the past, recuse myself on those items, my wife, as I've disclosed before, is an attorney with a law firm called The Knight, and provides legal services to waste management, I'm going to recuse myself, I will pass, and I filled out the appropriate Form 8, I believe, that you familiar with, and I will pass the gavel to the capable and competent hands of Vice President Mockers to preside over this, these items.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will return it to you, depending on your behavior going forward.
I've been a good voice so far.
Based on your conduct so far, I'd say you've got pretty good chance.
Thank you.
All right, we need a motion to read.
Motion to read.
Resolution.
Second, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Lighthouse Point, Florida, approving and authorizing proper city officials to execute a second amendment to the amended and restated solid waste and recycling collection contract with Waste Management Inc. of Florida and providing for an effective date.
All right, are there any questions, comments, anybody, on this resolution? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve Resolution 2018-2211.
A second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, all those that approve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, resolution passes. Okay, so we're going to go to number six, and we have an agenda item number six, waive the bid process and adopt another resolution for recycling services, do we have a motion to read?
A resolution. I'll make a motion to read.
Second, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Lighthouse Point, Florida, approving and authorizing the proper city officials to execute a recycling services agreement with Waste Management Inc. of Florida and providing for an effective date. Just for the record, just to note, when you pass, if you pass this resolution, it is operating also the way of the bid process to do recycling services with waste management, so this would need to be unanimous.
All right, Sandy.
Yeah, I just want to know if we could, in our newsletter or on our website or something, be very specific over exactly what needs to go in that recycling, because so much has come up recently in last month, showing that some of the things that we thought were fine to recycle, you can't recycle. And also, I wanted to know, what's the degree, because there's a penalty if you put too much dirty stuff in there, what exactly do you have to do with them to make them clear, clean enough to recycle? Like if you have a jar of spaghetti sauce, do you actually have to wash it? Do all that stuff with it? So, I would just like to see that clarified, so that people that have questions, like I have, would be able to know just what you have to do. And I saw somewhere where you're not supposed to put bottles in with labels on them, but almost every bottle has a label, so do you have to soak the label off before you put the bottle in? So if we could just get a really specific thing from Waste Management, exact, specific, and put it on, like I said, our website or the newsletter, so that people know.
John, how would we do that?
Don't put dirty things in there, it won't take.
We have an insert going in the newsletter going out. And we've uploaded more information on the website, and the question about whether you should clean out a jar, the jars break, and if there's residue in the jar, and it breaks, it can contaminate the material. Because you're mixing glass and paper, everything together.
What about the labels on the jar?
I've never heard of that before.
That was always an impression, I mean, it kind of gets crushed and pulled and washed and everything else, but the oils were the problem. And the pizza box, the part that surprised me.
And it's, it's single string, so it's all together as it goes to the plant, and if something breaks, when it's in, when it's in a truck or in the.
So you leave that half-filled Coke bottle in, and it gets crushed in the truck, that's what happens.
But if you put like a can of soda or a can of beer, and you rinse it out, you don't have to put soap and lipstick, and, you know, go really waste the whole bunch of water, just as long as it's rinsed and it's.
Well, we'll trust John to get that information inserted as stated, and so we can clarify as best we can. Mr. Van Bussker.
I mean, I saw a couple, I mean, we all know that other cities have been going through this recycling issue, there was a Waste Management assisted in putting out a, I want to say, it was about a five-minute clip on, basically like a video, I thought was pretty good, I don't necessarily know how we get it out there, I mean, I don't know, you have it? Okay. I thought it was a very good little clip, and I mean, it was really informative, they didn't have to read through it, it was something that you could always look up, I actually think it's on YouTube permanently also, but if we could find some way to attach that to those cities' websites, so people that are looking on could say, okay, and it was kind of catchy, it was a little, it was, they did a good job.
Included in this agreement is advertisement or education that the city and Waste Management is going to participate in together.
And the styrofoam with what's on the bottom of those things, which of those things really can go in your doggy bags, which can really go into the recycling, because I thought there were certain symbols that said you could, but then in Deerfield, they were saying that you can't. And then also, plastic bags, I know you can't put the Publix plastic bags, but I see, like Bed Bath &amp; Beyond gives you a plastic bag, and right on it, it says, please recycle this bag, so is it all plastic bags that?
They don't want plastic bags in the container, no, they don't want styrofoam in the container.
None of those, even though they have that thing on it that supposedly means it's okay?
Luigi Pace is here from Waste Management, he could answer all these questions.
I can answer some of them. Good evening, Luigi Pace with Waste Management. Plastic bags are very bad for the system, they channel up all the gears and the star screen, then you have to shut down the entire plant to order to clean that out.
And then what about the supposed recycles on the doggy bag things, they have like a triangle on it?
Well, in all the, in all the information we're going to pass along, it's going to tell you exactly which material can go in there, styrofoam is bad, there's no market for that, so.
So even though it has the recycle symbol on it, it's not.
Yes, right.
And I think there's confusion with that, because I used to always watch them, put those in, because I thought they were okay.
If it's the styrofoam, we just can't take it.
So let's educate everybody, so we can make your choices.
And we've got a ton of material and the videos and all that, we can all, we can put it on the website, if that's what you wish to do, and work to get that information out to everybody.
That's great, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, after that very helpful discussion, do we have any further, before somebody offers a motion?
We have a motion to waive the bid process, adopt a resolution approving recycling services agreement between the city of Lighthouse Point and Waste Management Inc. Applause.
Second. All right, we have a motion, and we have a second, all those in favor, an aye, please signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, is there anything else on Waste Management that we can't hand over to Jason?
What would you do in France? Just keep it up.
Well, maybe we'll just go through this thing and whip it out. Turn back over to Mr. President.
Sir. On to agenda, item number seven, a resolution approving a highway maintenance memorandum agreement for the Ibis Bridge replacement located on northeast 23rd Avenue between 29th and 30th Streets. Public Works Director, sir. Public Board Director.
Yes, sir, and I can't wait for that YouTube video to be up there. Tell people, please watch the video without confusion. So the Florida Department of Transportation, as we all know, is going to replace the Ibis, the bridge over the Ibis Waterway. Design and pre-construction activities are underway. The construction is still scheduled to begin in July of 2019. The project is funded by the department, and it's part of their off-system bridge replacement program. As part of us getting the bridge, they require a maintenance memorandum of agreement, which basically gives the FDOT permission and their contractors permission to work in the city right of way to construct the project, and if, we also agree to maintain the infrastructure perpetually afterwards. So what you have before you is a, is the resolution and a maintenance memorandum of agreement as attachments. Presently, there's no financial impact, there will be once we start maintaining it after it's built. So at this point, I recommend the City Commission approve the resolution adopting the highway maintenance memorandum of agreement with the Department of Transportation and authorize city administrators to execute the agreement.
Commissioners, do we have a motion to read?
I'll offer a motion to read. Second.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lighthouse Point, Florida, approving a highway maintenance memorandum of agreement from the State of Florida Department of Transportation for Project 43435915201 for the reconstruction of the Ibis Bridge number 867202 located at Northeast 23rd Avenue between the Northeast 29th Street and Northeast 30th Street, providing for conflict serviceability and an effective date.
Commissioners, just to Mr. Benson's point, then, big question, but just to frame it, this, this is not, by my observation, the actual contract for the construction of the bridge. It simply allows the eventual contractor permission to get on, get on city property and do the job, and then, once they finish building it, it's our problem. It's our bridge, and we got to deal with it.
That's correct.
So this won't be the contract, but to Mr. Benson's point, that contract will be heavily scrutinized, and we'll try and put all the bells and whistles on it that we can this time around.
Commissioners, anything further?
Nope, that's very important.
Other than I live one house away from this project, so.
But to Mr. So to Mr. Benson's point, though, I, I have yet to find a contract, and if I can write one, that literally allows you to just reach into somebody's bank account and take the money that you think is theirs. So I think that's the litigation we're kind of going through right now. We have a contract, we believe our rights are correspond to that contract, but we unfortunately have to go through the process, but that doesn't mean the eventual contract should not be scrutinized, so.
Can we change the contract when it's F.S.O. that's doing it?
I don't even, I, I don't think, I don't think we can.
We have to do what they, they're the ones that hired the minority contractor last time, and they caused all the problems, but it's their thing, not ours.
That's correct, we don't, do not have a say in the selection of the contractor.
Okay. Commissioners, anything further on this, questions?
No, now that you beat it to death, I would offer a motion to pass Resolution 2018-2213, approving a highway maintenance memorandum agreement.
Memorandum.
Memorandum. Memorandum, I'm sorry.
I got two new glasses.
A motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Chuck. Whoa, you're up again.
I'm up.
Drainage infrastructure inspection, cleaning and repair, RFP 2018-0007.
Yes, sir, thank you again. Regular cleaning and inspections and repairs are necessary for our drainage system. Additionally, we're required to do this work to retain our, retain our stormwater co-permittee status with Broward County with the drainage permit with the state. And also, keeping our systems clean and functioning properly helps keep our surface waters clean. So we, in an effort to make a proactive approach towards this maintenance and repairs, we advertised an RFP, request for proposal, back in June, and a selection committee was formed, and we received the following bids as a response to our RFP. Enviro Waste Services Group, just to backtrack, we advertised some basic line items that we anticipate are going to be needed for cleaning, maintenance, and repairs, and this is how they responded to that. There was some linear footages for different size pipes, different liners, different cleaning activities, different size pipes, cleaning and everything. So, so each company bid based on their in-house prices. Enviro Waste Services Group, $179,309.50. Hinterland Group from River Year Beach, $188,718. And Situ Form Technologies from Chesterfield, Missouri, Swither Base, $352,873. Lane Inliner from Sanford, Florida, $184,974.10. Brickman Construction of Florida and Deerfield Beach, $211,293. Shen Line LLC of Pompano Beach, $176,016.4. And Van Vision Environmental from Tampa, $249,941. So we had, we had three bids that were fairly close to each other for low bids, so rather than just base it off of what was in the RFP, we asked the city engineer to come up with a real project, basically right out here, 38th Street, there's some drainage issues there, there's eight basins, and we have over a thousand feet of drainage pipe that's in need of repair and lining. And so we wrote up a scope, and we went to these three lower bids, and we based that job on their prices. And the city engineers did an analysis, and Shen Line LLC, for them to do the job would be $119,210. Lane Inliner, $125,310. And Enviro Waste Group would be $158,505.50. So based on those numbers and a real project and the other data we assembled, here tonight to recommend the selection of Shen Line LLC as the lowest, most responsive bidder, and authorize the expenditure of funds in the amount of approximately $100,000 per year for this maintenance and cleaning activities from the Stormwater Fund, and authorize the appropriate city officials to execute the documents.
We need a motion to read.
I'll offer a motion to read.
Second. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lighthouse Point, Florida, awarding the bid to Shen Line LLC and an improvement in agreement for drainage infrastructure inspection, cleaning, and repair, RFP number 2018-007, authorizing the expenditure of funds, authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute the agreement and all necessary documents, and providing for an effective date. Discussion, Commissioners. Motion to pass. Motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Chuck, quickly, right by my house, 25th Street.
Right.
First, there's a little hole that's starting to create in the middle of that area between the two drains.
25th, oh, on the side street right in front of your house, then 25th Street, okay.
Yeah, there's two drains, right in the middle, starting in.
In the middle of the road.
Concave, yeah. Concave between the two of them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Item number nine, an item that I think everybody is happy to see.
Yes.
Resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lighthouse Point and the Broward County Police Benevolent Association, City Administrator Lovitsky.
Mr. President, Commissioners, the Broward County PBA has ratified the contract, and now it's up to the City Commission to approve it before it's adopted. The agreement is effective one October 2018. It has a 1% base increase beginning then, second year the contract, a 1% base pay increase, and the third year the agreement's a 2% base pay increase. The changes to the pension are similar to what the Fire Department agreed to. There's one small change under in-service distribution, the police officers are guaranteed a minimum of four years, and the most they could get in service, in service distribution is six years, where the firefighters agreed to no minimum, but the most they can get is seven years in service distribution. There's also a change in the market adjustment for kind of take-home cars, the payment is $3,000 a year, now it's going to go up to $3,600 the first year, and then the second year will be $3,900, and then the third year will be $3,900. Other than that, it's pretty much what the Fire Department agreed to. Request the City Commission adopt the resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement with the PBA.
Motion to read.
Second.
Oh, no, I need a motion to read, I can't make it.
I'll offer a motion. No, motion to read.
Whoever. I'll first, it's second, third, whatever it takes.
I think that's the submission record, we'll go with. Motion made by Commissioner Makker, seconded by Commissioner Huang.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lighthouse Point, Florida, approving the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Lighthouse Point and the Broward County Police Benevolent Association, PBA, which agreement shall be effective October 1, 2018, and shall remain in full force and effect through September 30, 2021, and providing for an effective date. Commissioners, Commissioner Makker.
Is there a favored nation clause?
There is one in the firefighter contract, there's not one in the police contract.
What does that mean?
Means that if one gets it, the other.
Me too.
It's like a me too.
Me too.
Me too. If, if they think something's better, they, they get to evaluate whether, and then vote on whether they think it's better or not.
The firefighters can ask for something identical to the police department if they so wish.
Correct. Okay, is there any further discuss, if not, I'll offer a motion. I'll offer a motion to pass Resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement between the city and the Broward Police Benevolent Association.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amen.
Amen.
For an interesting July and August.
All right, final item on the agenda, a resolution recognizing the 50th anniversary of constitutional home rule.
Mr. President, members of the City Commission, this is here this evening as a promotion of Florida's home rule, which was voted in by Florida voters in November of 1968, implemented with the Home Rule Act, which was a few years later, but we all recognize that as about 1973, but regardless, the Constitution was passed with this, and this resolution, I guess, honors that, acknowledges that, and provides that we'll continue to pursue all of the rights of home rule on behalf of the residents of the City of Lighthouse Point.
Motion to read. I'll make a motion, sorry. Motion to read by Commissioner Johnson. Second. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Lighthouse Point, Florida, honoring 50 years of municipal home rule in Flor, in the Florida Constitution, and committing to an educational initiative to help Floridians understand the beneficial right, and providing for an effective date. Discussion? Motion to pass. Second. We have a motion, we have a second, on Resolution 2018-2216, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. That brings us to the end of our agenda items. It comes to public comments and requests from the floor. Unlike the first part of the meeting, this can be for anything, so we would like to address the Commission on anything that's on your mind. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Bow her up.
Good evening, everybody. Jim Trulisi, 3810, 27th Avenue. My sole purpose here is to say thank you to the mayor and commission for your help with FPNL. The situation involving several hundred homes has been greatly resolved. I understand they've installed the underground lines and done a lot of tree trimming, et cetera. It's not complete, but it's, it's far better than it was, and it's thanks to you people that got them started, and they say they are continuing. I spoke with Mr. Hogan recently, and he told me that they're still working on it, but it's been, it's a lot better, and thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
What kind of underground lines?
You, you, what was it?
No, I just wondered what kind of underground lines.
Did they do it to your house, Jim?
No, this is, was over in the 44th Street area, underground lines that were suffering from saltwater intrusion. They kept repairing, and they cut it down by a hundred years, so they finally replaced those lines.
Right, what happened, what happened is the glue that holds the conduit together had broken down, and water got into it, and saltwater and electricity don't do real well together, and that's, that's what they went in and they had to do some digging. The other thing I noticed over there, Jim, is that they have done a tremendous amount of tree trimming.
Yes, they have, I agree. And thank you again, listening to you folks getting involved, and you know, might have acted.
And you bring it to our, you bring it to our attention, so, thank you. Sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
No worries. Danny Slavich, 2131, Northeast 33rd Street. Just introducing myself formally, I am the pastor of Crotch United Church, we're a new church, and don't actually have a physical location, but we're going to be meeting at Trinity Church, starting on September 9th, and we're just really here to, to do what you all are here to do, and that's just to serve the city in any way we can. I'm a newcomer, relatively speaking to Lighthouse Point, my wife is a longtime resident, her grandparents moved here in 1958, and so we're just grateful to be here alongside you all, and just wanted to say hello, and so you would know who was often in vocation, thank you to Commissioner Busker for inviting me, and looking forward to serving alongside.
Danny, are you affiliated with the Cross Church that's up in Deerfield off of Second?
We're not, no, we're not.
You're not, okay, just some way, some way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Got it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the city.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close, public comment, communications from Commissioners. Would you like to go first? Anybody? Commissioner Van Busker?
Sure, I'll go first. A couple things, I don't know if anybody noticed today, actually, when I went to go vote this afternoon, they ran out of ballots for the city. So I thought that was kind of interesting, they utilized, utilized their automated system, it was the first time they ever had, you had to use that automated system here, and the gentleman broke out the book, the manual, and we did it together. So it was kind of interesting, I just hope that in the future, you know, as we come up on our big referendum coming up here in November, that we hopefully don't have an issue where we're doing multiple different styles of balloting, because it is a little nerve-wracking when you walk in, they go, yeah, we're all out of your type of ballot. So.
Is that the Yakko Cup?
No, I brought it here.
Yeah, because I just got a text from a resident who said they ran out of Republican ballots at the Yakko.
Yes, it was, I mean, as of in here, because I do vote Republican, they ran out of Republican. Yeah, I asked the same exact question, they said they brought the same amount for both. I said, okay, I said, listen.
If you were no political preference, that wouldn't have been a problem.
There was a stack of them like that big, there was, it wasn't even open yet, it's still plastic on it, so don't worry. But I just, I wanted to bring that up because it was important, the fact that we need to make sure that when we're coming up here in the near future, that they have plenty of election ballots for us.
What can we do about that?
I was going to ask Mike, is there someone in your office that can reach out to the SOE's office and find out what's going on, I don't know that.
That's not cool. Yeah, I can, I can figure out a way to, to talk with somebody, I mean.
Maybe even if it's counsel for the SOE. This, this shouldn't happen. I, I voted by mail, let's go around, and my wife actually received two ballots.
It was just, I'll be honest, it was very interesting.
No, it was both the same party.
I bet it was.
It was very interesting, because the gentleman said, well, I haven't used the system before.
What time of day was that?
4:30 before I came in to the prayer meeting. And, I mean, he had a break of the book, he went through the whole entire thing, it seemed all good, but again, it was just very odd that you'd have to go ahead and vote like that. Secondly, I actually brought something up to John Lovitsky the other day on a discussion, we have a timeline, our, well, phrase, 50-50 North Federal Highway. Basically, we've been under construction for almost three years over there at the communications company. I know that we had to do some infrastructure work there, I know we had to do some drainage issues, I know they removed Australian pines, but that building has legitimately been under construction for three years. construction for three years. You know, we, not even, four, two years, two and a half years ago, if I recall correctly, we put an ordinance to effect to make sure that we had our homeowners, they were not burdened by their next-door neighbors under construction for two, three, four, five, six years. Some of the residents were taking up to eight or nine years to build a house. I think we need to look into, the fact is, is in a reasonable time, obviously, that we are able to push somebody to finish their construction specifically over that 50-50 building. Because I looked the other day, I thought, "Oh, maybe they're getting close," and then yesterday the doors were wide open, and there's not even a roof on the place. And I was like, "Wow." We've, I mean, that's a long time for us to be, and that is part of our very small frontage of the city, and to start off by looking at that, the city, I think, is definitely a drawback. So I really wanted to think if we wanted to talk about it, or at least review it, if everybody's interested, we might be putting on something on the discussion to talk about whether we want to have a timeframe for construction on our commercial properties. So that's one of the things I just wanted to bring up.
I mean, I know we have the issue with permits and how long they can go without being redone. It doesn't look like they've done anything. I mean, the rest of the property has been renovated, at least the front of it, of the shopping center itself. What is going on with the actual building?
They're two different owners, you know, for...
Right, so this is now, we've segregated it, just this piece here, nothing's happened?
Well, I'm not going to, I'm not defending them, I wish the building was finished. The way the ordinance was written was it affected single-family homes and duplexes and, and commercial properties that didn't have to go to the planning and zoning board, that time limit is on that ordinance. So somebody at 50-70 who's doing that work, they have, that ordinance is applicable to them. The way the ordinance was written is a building like 50-50, if the planning and zoning board puts a time limit requirement on them, which they can, which they can do, they can put a construction limit on them, so that's in the ordinance now. I believe this project predates that ordinance, because it's been going on forever. I know too, anytime there's a disaster, something happens in the state, and there's a declared emergency, and Mike can talk better about this, building permits are extended too. It's, I think it's very difficult sometimes to regulate the time of construction of commercial vehicles.
Well, yeah, the declaration of emergencies, if there's ever one declared for whatever reason in your county, then everything gets extended based on the length of that declaration of emergency plus 180 days.
Isn't there a question of how long, when it starts? I remember, but I give a choice.
What, what, is the question of when the extension starts?
Yeah, I remember there was some...
Well, the problem is we get overlapping declarations of emergencies.
Right, that's where it is.
Because, for example, there was a declaration of emergency last year where it was to allow, because of all the rain in the fields down in South Florida, they lifted the weight limits for trucks on the interstates, they could haul the fruits out, the vegetables out, and they listed all the counties that it applied to, had nothing to do with redevelopment or a building permit in Lighthouse Point, but under the statute, that extended the building permits in Lighthouse Point, because that statute is not narrowly tailored to natural disasters that directly affect the site plan approval or the building permit or anything else. So, you know, the green algae, if we happen to fall within that emergency someday, if it comes all the way south, that'll extend building permits and site plans in Broward County, just the way that statute's written. So we have to work within that system. In Palm Beach County, for example, on their website, it tells you you've got several hundred days of extensions based on all the emergencies they've had in Lake Okeechobee and everything else, so, but we can, we can look into that issue and see what's going on with it.
We've had three declared emergencies that I can recall in the last two years, and that's a year and a half of extensions right there.
Yes.
But also, what has actually been done? This is, obviously has nothing to do with a declared emergency. What has actually been done on that building in the last two years? We forced them to put a fence up.
It's under construction, there's...
Under construction would mean something's happening.
Yeah, there's no top, there's no side.
Other than having a construction fence up and them having active permits, unless they're doing something, making a nuisance or making noise, it's a construction project and we can't force them to move any fast.
They're not moving at all. That's my question. I mean, has anything been done that you've seen?
It seemed like they did a lot and then it stopped again.
Yeah, I mean, I just, all I know, the other day when I drove by and I saw the doors open, there was no roof on the place, I was like...
Yeah, that's been, that was a long time.
I'm like, "There's still no roof on this place?" I thought to myself, it just, it's a look, it's all about being, you know, like we wanted to, folks on the residential side, we wanted to have somebody that came out and, you know, made sure that we were held accountable to our neighbors.
To your, to your point, I think if we were to pass some sort of ordinance that would apply to that building, we can't do it now, can't do it right now.
Not to that building.
Not to that building, so, I mean, we're stuck with that, but to your point, we want to avoid that going...
That's all, more so.
We want, I think it makes logical sense to at least consider it or have a discussion item on it, it's not something we're going to bang out now, but...
Can't we just call the developers and ask what's happening?
We, the developer is, it's, they're overseas, they're just not connected, the contractor and developer have been going back and forth, they don't know really what they wanted, they redesigned the building. It's, I mean, it's a bad situation, and our hands, our hands as a city are tied.
But if we pass something and they came in with different permits or plan changes, wouldn't that then fall under this new code if we were to do that?
If they came in with something that required approvals, and they could, depending on what the ordinance says and whatnot, but yeah, if you all want to discuss it and give us some direction, how you'd like us to consider something, but theoretically, if they had to come in for a whole new application, if whatever rights they had under the ones that pre-existed the ordinance, they'd walk away from by asking for new relief.
But if nothing has been done on this thing, couldn't we even consider an abandoned building?
Let it push dirt around periodically, Mike.
I mean, again, we haven't seen, we just see the fence up. Obviously, it's going to be affecting the livelihood of businesses next to it, which is again, it's a building that's now causing them financial hardship. It is an isolate, and we've been dealing with that isolate for probably 15, 20 years now, when it was Thomasville, Ethan Allen, or whatever it was over the years. It's, and nothing really is being done, so whatever games they're playing, it's just not being done.
When they, when the Florida building, I'm not defending them, I'm just telling you the way it is, or advised in the, the Florida Building Code, if you have a permit and you call in an inspection, it's automatically extended for six months. That's how, that's how permits work. You call in an inspection, you're doing some work, it's extended for six months.
Not just in an emergency.
It's a shell with no roof. What could they actually have to have inspected?
Commit, let's see if Commissioner Mocker...
What I'm suggesting is, forget the formal stuff, because that's going to take forever, a phone call that says to somebody responsible, "Look, the city's getting pretty upset about this," and they're going to end up passing a formal ordinance that's going to really give you a difficult time, so how about giving us some answers on what you're doing and what's the timeframe that you could finish this up? Without us going into a formal ordinance, at least at this point, just letting them know, "The city's not happy with this," and they're going to do something about it if you don't show some signs of going forward.
I understand.
Yeah, I just...
And in the meantime, should we move forward for possible ordinance?
I would say, let's see what John gets.
Yeah, I'm fine with having a discussion, I mean, you want to...
No, that's fine. Be a pro act, but I think we need to let them know the city's not going to sit around forever.
I, I guess, I take you at your, your word, I'm sure, I know you're frustrated by this, you're not defending them, I just, it feels wrong that we have no, that that building can be under construction for perpetuity. That's basically what you're kind of telling us, and I, that doesn't seem right. But I, I mean, I'm not just thinking out loud.
I could be wrong, the city attorney could tell me wrong, but that's how I understand the Florida Building Code.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, you call in a permit, inspection extends permits.
Okay.
And that is a, that is a clause in the, in the building code that I guess a lot of contractors probably know about, or the owners know about.
Commissioner Van Busker, you have another item?
We're going to, we're going to have this on the, we're going to have this, put this on the agenda for further discussion.
I can't say it as eloquently as you did previously, I mean, at previous meeting, but I think that also ties into the fact is that we look at a larger project in the city, that we do put time constraints or building constraints on folks to make sure that they do the right things. So I think that that all could tie together.
I could think of a project that we talked about tonight, that we may, that we may...
Right, I want to see. Like I said, I can't say it as eloquently as you did, but absolutely, it's something we should all really be paying attention to, so I'm going to skip the last portion, I think. Thank you, sir.
All right. Anybody else, Commissioner Mocker?
Yeah, a technical topic, and I don't mean to prolong the discussion, but it's come up and I want to raise it at least so we can have a little quick discussion. With the advent of a new fire station, some people are claiming that they were promised if a new fire station came along, that they were going to get fuel delivery of gasoline to dockside, and some of these folks are buying tens of thousands of gallons, so it's a lot of money. And some are claiming, whether it's accurate or not, that they were told when a new fire station was built, that we would begin to allow fuel to be delivered. I've talked to the fire chief about it, obviously he knows, and some people have talked to him, and I've heard other people talk about it. I just think we need to clarify to our residents, I don't know what in the world a new fire station would mean in terms of fuel delivery, it's always been a question of firefighting and so forth. But anyway, it's cropped up again, and in some circles, very false motives have been put to it, like we're, you know, being influenced by sellers of fuel and that type of thing. But it's out there, it's going to crop up, and others are claiming, "Well, I'll vote for a fire station as long as we're now going to get, as promised, fuel delivery of gasoline." So it's out there, somehow we're going to need to address it. I'm sure you've heard it, John, I know Glenn and I have talked about it, but it's out there, it came up at an exchange club meeting the other day, and it's percolating, so we need to be ready to answer that question if, you know, other, many people are claiming that other cities our size, with our capabilities, are allowing fuels, why can't we let fuel be delivered? Some people are going across the property line to Pompano to get it, and again, we're talking tens of thousands of gallons, so you're talking a lot of money. And they brought it up again, so I'm bringing it up for everybody to be aware and make sure we have got the right answers when somebody claims we're doing this for nefarious reasons.
All right. Anybody else?
I have one other item. I'm getting, I'm sure all of us are, questions back to the bond, we've announced the election, so I'm just getting a lot of questions about the bond, and I don't, the first question I'm getting, just to bring up for discussion and topic, which I think is a good one, is the people that really know about construction and know about these type of facilities and buildings are asking me, are, if this bond passes and the green light is given to do all these wonderful projects, would the city be retaining the services as some sort of professional or project manager to kind of quarterback it all? And it seemed like a logical explanation?
John and I just had this discussion.
Because it seemed like it made a lot of sense, and I didn't have the answer, and so, is that, is that a yes?
Yes. What we'll be doing is, this will have to go through a whole process, CCNA, in terms of getting the construction done, hiring the contractor, hiring the architect, designing the facility...
Making sure it's done on time and on budget, on schedule.
Exactly. So all of this has to be done, and part of the process is that someone needs to put in design criteria. So you would hire someone to do the design criteria, then they can't bid on the project, but they assist the city in all these other phases.
But they would be a project, this person would become the project manager?
Yes, they represent us. They represent us.
Okay. That is, that is good to hear, I thought it was a logical, I think it probably costs money, but probably money well spent, because...
Well, a lot of times it's saving, it can save you money too, because there's a design-build aspect to it.
Don't they call that value engineering?
That's, that's, that's a separate phase of that process, yes.
Correct, yeah, because that's one of the things, I know one of our residents brought it up, to make sure that when we do put this out, you know, with the bond, that we do have value engineering, and make sure that we are getting the value for the engineering costs and making sure they help us stay within range and say where we can save money here and do the right things to make sure it's each cheaper.
Well, but you've got to be careful with value engineering, because there's a project going on at a local church in town right now, that they value engineered it, and it turned out the trusses that they value engineered don't meet the design criteria, and they had to go back to square one on the root trusses. So it's a sticky, it's a sticky wicket, is what it comes down to. But that's why you get an overall project manager, that kind of quarterbacks you through to all those processes.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good to hear, I'm going to start educating on that topic. And the only other thing I do want to say to get it off my chest, and I'm not meaning this as a criticism, because I know everybody in administration has been very busy, whether it's pensions, bonds, yacht clubs, I, we've got two months to educate. I just, I need, I need numbers, I need information, people are hungry for the information, so please get us that stuff, because I want to start answering questions, giving accurate information, we all need to...
You have a budget already.
I have a budget, but, you know, millage numbers, millage increases per 100,000, I know we talked about it with Frank, but I want, I'd like to see it in this, I mean, I know you're saying it's 70%, I'm not being critical, I promise, but we got two months, and I just, we need to start.
Mm-hmm.
Soon. Like, today. Okay. So I just wanted to get, I can be, I can be, but I just want to get that out there,